Alrighty, we are going to call to order the regular meeting of the Oviedo City Council. It is Monday, July 18th. It is approximately 6:50 PM. At this time, if we can all rise, pledge allegiance. Officer Rosarias, why don't you come on up here and lead us in the pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Chief White. How are you, chief?
Very good.
Good evening, council. If any of you would like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we come to you tonight in prayer for our nation. We pray for those families and those fellow employees of our fallen law enforcement officers. Or we pray that you would instill healing and comfort and protect them in everything that they do to protect us. Lord, be with all of our city employees, all of our elected leaders. Lord, continue to grant many blessings on this wonderful town. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, chief. I'd like to call our meeting to order now. Our first order of business ceremonial item is new officer introductions. Chief Chudnow, why don't you come on up and do the honors? I kind of ruined your surprise a little there. I'm sorry.
That's quite all right, mayor. It's good for him to get up here and lead us in the pledge. As we do with all our new officers, we're bringing them before the council. So not only the council can know them, but they can meet the council and introduce them to the rest of the city. So at this time, I'd like to call up Officer Jason Rosarias, who just joined us a few weeks ago. And I'm going to let him introduce himself and tell everybody a little bit about himself.
Just give it a second. He'll turn. There you go.
Hey, everybody. I'm Officer Jason Rosarias. I am extremely proud to introduce myself in front of you guys. As you know, a lot of you guys know, I grew up here. Can't be more thankful to be able to represent my own city, my own hometown. Every single night, I go out with my FTO. I'm learning new things. And I'm honestly feeling that I'm actually serving in my own community whenever I see everything I'm used to and grew up with. I just want to say, especially to Chief Chudnow, thank you so much for the opportunity. And I couldn't be more proud to serve the city of Oviedo.
Welcome, Jason. Keep yourself safe out there. Look at your parents beaming back. Now, Jason, it's kind of strange for me looking at you in a uniform, considering how long I've known you and you were just, you know, about that big. So congratulations, man. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman has something to say.
Yeah, I've got something to say. Jason, thank you for choosing this profession as your career. Law enforcement is very, very important, as you know. My husband was in law enforcement for over 40 years. And in light of what's been happening to police officers all over our country, I'm sure your family is a little nervous, a little apprehensive. So we really want you to be careful and be safe out there and know that most people are behind our police officers. Most people understand that our police officers are there to protect us. You know, there was a shooting in Dallas, I believe it was. And they interviewed a woman. And she said, and this really speaks to police officers and what they do. She said, when the shooting started, everyone was running away. Everybody was scattering. Everybody was hiding, except the police officers. The police officers go to the trouble, go to the shooter, so that they can apprehend him to save more lives. And they do that all the time. And I just think it's a tragedy what's going on right now. So you have our 100% support. Be careful out there because we don't want your parents to worry, which they will anyway, no matter what we say. So good luck to you and welcome to Oviedo.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Give this man a... Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Councilman Hinkin.
I'm glad Councilwoman brought that up. But I just wanted to add as well, you know, Jason, welcome. It's great to have a hometown kid here. But, you know, for all our officers, and Councilwoman started to touch on it, and I talked to the chief a little bit about this last week. You know, I want you and everybody to know, all five of us in this staff, what goes on in this country with police officers. That doesn't happen in Oviedo. And for our current chief, our past chief, and the chiefs before that have made a bond with our community that we don't have this tension. Everybody in Oviedo gets along. But, you know, I always worry about you guys when you're making that long walk to the side of a car in the dark of night. Where would you? Always. So you guys have our full support. And I'm very glad Councilwoman brought that up. So go out there. You have a safe career. We'll always be there for you, chief. Thank you for all you do. Your men and women are awesome. And, you know, we're not going to have what's going on out there here. So thankfully, we're all here in Oviedo, and it's good. So good luck. Be safe. Glad you're here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Give him a round of applause. Now he has to go to work. It looks like he's all dressed up for work. Alrighty. Moving on, we're on to ceremonial item number two. And this is the donation to the American Cancer Society's 7th Annual Relay for Life Golf Outing and Appreciation Presentation to Republic Services. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Drew Boware, our Parks and Rec Director.
Good evening, mayor, council. Tonight is always a fun night for me and to bring about not only several partners that we do the event with, but also to show what we were able to once again bring in to donate to Relay for Life, American Cancer Society. To date, this is our 7th annual outing. And to date, going into this year, we had raised over 100... Well, raised exactly $117,521 and donated to the American Cancer Society over the last six years.
And that's just through everything that you do here at City Hall?
The cheesesteaks, the golf outings?
Gene Day. Staff donates to wear jeans on Fridays throughout the year. Our Philly Chicken Sandwich Days. We've done a couple of things with Jersey Mike's this year. And then, of course, the golf outing. So at this time, I'd like to first start off with bringing in Brian Thornton, who's the general manager with Republic Services. Once again, they were our top sponsor, $6,000, for six years running. And I'd like to bring Brian up to give him a little token of our appreciation. I'd like Council to come down to do that for us.
Thank you, Drew. Alrighty. You know, Republic Services does so much more for our community than everybody realizes other than faithfully picking up your garbage each week. They contribute and give back to the Parks and Rec, to different organizations in our city. Whenever they're asked, they always step up. They always contribute to this event. So Brian, the city of Oviedo and the American Cancer Society would like to recognize our title sponsor, Republic Services, for your continued support of the Relay for Life Golf Outing in 2016. Sir, thank you so much for everything.
On behalf of Republic Services, we certainly value the partnership we have with the city of Oviedo. We value you as residents. I'm honored to be up here as a part of the community. I love the city of Oviedo. I actually live in Orlando, but I value this community and value what we do. That's right. And hey, I can change to, you know, residents pretty quick. But certainly appreciate it, in council, in the honorable mayor, in staff. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be able to support this very important event in our community here. So thank you. Thank you, residents. We appreciate you.
And Brian, why don't you stay up here and help Mr. Boware with the imaginary check? He usually has the real check, but let me turn it over to him first. Don't go anywhere. We want you to help us unveil that.
I'd like to go ahead and have Chad Bartlett, which is our local sponsor, or actually, he's our coordinator for Relay for Life come up, as well as Kelly Wild. She's our event manager... Excuse me, the event coordinator for this past year's Relay for Life event. And Chris Anderson wasn't able to make it. Okay. So I do have the real check. I'll take that later. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chad to just say a few words before we do the unveiling. And I'll have Brian do the unveiling, okay? Hopefully, the check will make you happy. Here we go.
Well, thank you, Drew, again, council. Brian, everyone here in attendance, I truly appreciate another opportunity. This is my fifth season with the American Cancer Society. And I'm not an Oviedo-born and raised, but I am an Orlando-born and raised. So I am very familiar with this town. I've been fishing here all my life. I have friends and family all that live here. So it's such an honor for me, as the representative from the American Cancer Society, to come here and just have this ongoing relationship with the city and their partners because it's truly such a wonderful thing that we're able to do. And when you think about that number, you know, and you look at what's on that wall and all that's been accomplished, I mean, all of this was done without the city funding. I mean, this is what people do, to go above and beyond. They stretch the dollar. They make it work. And then they still go out and do more. So truly hats off to everyone, each and every one that donated through the cheesesteaks, through the Blue Jeans Days and things like that. And that money goes to help so many people right here locally. And yes, we are the largest non-government-funded, you know, cancer research company, nonprofit in the world. And I'm not going to even apologize for that because we absolutely are saving lives through medications and things that we support. But the lodging, the rides to and from treatment, the wigs, the makeup, all of the things that people get free of charge every day, right here in Winter Park, which is our local office. And it serves so many of the surrounding counties. We have our Hope Lodges in Tampa, Gainesville. We have a new one coming to Jacksonville. These are free places for people to stay that are undergoing treatment. And it's just a phenomenal thing. So this money goes to help people in your neighborhood as well. So again, thank you on behalf of myself and Kelly, who is our event chair volunteer. She leads a team of about 16 people to coordinate this event. And to date, we have raised, not counting the mystery check, we have raised $73,205.55 for this year, so.
You want to do the unveiling? Brian, come on over. Do you just do it real easy? We just do this. And here we go.
A total of $21,000. We actually went up a little bit from last year. Last year, we cut a check to you for $18,000. I don't have my glasses on, so $784. And we were happy to... We were able to raise a little bit more this year for the American Cancer Society. It's a heartwarming ability for us to be able to do this, so.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to present this to you as well from the American Cancer Society for the continued support, dedication to us and the organization. To be your charity of choice, we truly, truly appreciate it.
I accept this from the entire city staff and through all of the work. We just go out and play bad golf. We greatly appreciate it. I say this every year, Councilman Hinkin, and you all... Councilman Britton, and you all know, will not play with Councilman Hinkin on because he calls us his gaming guy. That's understandable, considering he knows how to play the game. And we just know how to follow the game. Anyway, thank you so much, guys. It's a great event. We look forward to this. We want to make that check even bigger. And I think you're a true... Why don't you take this? This is yours. You guys have earned this. We'll put it out on the shelf. And thank you to all of you, because you take us, the park, your staff, everybody who's around the city, all the city departments who contribute and come to your different events throughout the year. It really makes a difference. It's about $21,000.
So the date now, we will... It is now grown to $138,521 in the last seven years.
Not too bad to grab the check and go to the park. And get my dishes ready and some cheesesteaks. We got a problem. What did you call? Councilwoman Ivey. Guys, great job.
How do we get it in?
We never know. I never know until we get it that night. They won't even tell me.
And one of these years, eleven, we'll tell you when the birdie on seven that Drew made. Birdie on seven. I can see the 30 team shot 55, so I may have to go read some.
It is a fun event. As golf events go, it is one of the best golf events, A, run, and most fun that there is. So next year, join in if you haven't before. Alrighty, let's see where we're up to. Moving along, we're up to item number three, which is the approval of the minutes for the June 20, 2016 regular session and the June 27, 2016 work session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? From the right? No? From the left? Alrighty, all in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes for both meetings? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we're up to our public comment portion of the meeting. I have no written request this evening. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on any item that does not have public comment or is on our consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight is lengthy. It is item number five through 22. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hinkin.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
I'll second.
A motion second. Councilman, anything?
Nope. Looks good.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Councilwoman Drago?
Good.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm fine, sir.
Alrighty. Hearing no discussion, I will call the question. The motion on the table is to adopt the consent agenda, item number five through 22. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we have no public hearings. We have no first readings, but we do have a few resolutions. Just give me a moment here to catch up. Let's see. First one is number 25. Alrighty, our first resolution is number 3216-16. It is Site Development Order Number 441-115. It's an amendment to the preliminary subdivision plan for the Hammock Park subdivision. Mr. Cobb, can you give us an introduction, please?
Yes, mayor, thank you. One thing before I begin, I'd like to let you know on your dais tonight, there is a copy of an amended site development order. We found a glitch in the computer system where what was received, uploaded into the sire system wasn't this. And this is what the resolution actually approved. So we wanted to make sure that you had it on the dais when you were considering this. Lynda, if you could pull up the graphic for us. This is a request for the council to approve an amendment to the approved preliminary subdivision plan for the Hammock Park subdivision. The city council approved the preliminary subdivision plan of June 1st of 2015 with the adoption of resolution number 2981-15. It approved the site development order number 441-15. The Hammock Park preliminary subdivision plan relates to 23 single-family lot residential development. In the approved plans, lot sizes vary from 9,600 square feet to 18,886 square feet. The minimum lot width is 80 feet, and with some lots reaching a width of 115 feet. The applicant has requested, if you look up on the board... I tried to bring this into a nutshell. The applicant requests three different things. On lots nine and 13, the applicant is requesting a five-foot deviation to allow a principal structure to be located 15 feet from the west property line. And that is the west property line only. That's on lots nine and 13, which are in the graphic are to the extreme left. On lots six and 10, which are over on the east side, the applicant is asking for a five-foot deviation along the east property line and to allow the principal structure to be located 15 feet from the property line. My assumption is, is that in all four of these lots, they are what we call double frontages. And the east frontage on lots six and 10, the west frontage on lots nine and 13, I assume are going to be the side lot lines and that the houses will face north and south respectively. So they're requesting for the deviation. The other request by the applicant is that, and the initial approval of the subdivision plan, the model homes were designated as lots four and five, which you'll see in the upper right-hand corner. The applicant is now requesting that lots one and two be designated as the model home center sales office. The staff has reviewed the amendments to the preliminary subdivision plan. It is recommended that city council adopt resolution number 3216-16.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant present?
Good evening. David Evans, Evans Engineering, 719 Irma Avenue, Orlando, 32803, here on behalf of Meritage Homes. We have read staff's recommendation and obviously agree with their synopsis and report as well as LPA's recommendation. I'm here to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Evans while he's here? No? We're good right now. I have no public comment forms. Is there anybody in the audience, though, who would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and move on to the pleasure of council.
Does Mayor make a motion to adopt resolution number 3216-16?
Second.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Schenk and a second by Councilwoman Drago. Deputy Mayor Schenk, you're on the floor.
It just seems like a little bit of cleanup, so go out and go.
Councilwoman?
I'm good.
Councilman Britton?
Just a brief statement. I'm not going to vote against this. But, you know, we've had some deviations come through recently that we haven't approved or sent back to the drawing board. What I see in this one that's different is that this is internal to the neighborhood. So whoever wants to come and live in this neighborhood is going to come in with their eyes wide open and they'll see these lots as they... They will exist. So that's the reason I'm going for this and not really considering voting against it.
Okay. Councilman Hinkin?
No, sir. Looks fine.
I do have a couple of questions. And Mr. Evans, maybe if you can come on up and answer them for me? My first question is, when this whole area was pre-planned, and it was actually pre-planned years ago by Meritage, when they did Hammock Park or whatever they called the one to the north, Shangri-La, this neighborhood, it was all supposed to connect. Are they connecting this?
There is an existing PSP in the city now that includes an extension of the northern property into the eastern side of this property. As a request by staff and through the design planning process of Shangri-La Lane and this particular piece of property, the road is stubbed to the north for eventual connection. The rightaways don't line up.
Right. Yeah, I know. You've got Shangri-La is here and the other one's there.
Yeah, it's available. The rightaway is there. Would have to be dedicated from the end of our piece and the stub of the road to the existing wiggle in the road in order to connect up to the north. But I don't see... The proposal's not on the table at this time, but that property owner certainly has the right to do that.
Mm-hmm. Alrighty. The other issue is, we have been getting many complaints from the homeowners in the area. I know there were emails flying around again this morning. Occasionally, we've been getting them on work being done outside of the allowable hours, things of that nature. Are these all being addressed?
Absolutely. I've been having been privy to all the emails. I've seen a few of them. And I know that Meritage is very responsive immediately, in this case, relative to any of those comments. But I'll pass that along to them and make sure that they're aware.
Is there anyone here from Meritage?
No, they're not here tonight. Couldn't make it.
Yeah. See, that makes it hard for me to...
But I'll certainly speak to them directly.
Makes it hard for me to vote for this if they're not even here to answer the issues that we've been having. But alrighty, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
Did your investigation turn up anything today on the email complaints we were getting on work hours and such up at Meritage? Is there anything that the city is failing to do to address these issues? And I realize a lot of them are noise-related, and nobody likes construction. I get that.
Actually, Mr. Wyatt has looked into the matter today. And I'd like to have him come up and update council.
Good evening.
Hey, Bobby.
I spoke with our inspector. He's been on site every day. He spoke to the work hour question I asked him. He said that on Saturday, when it was stated that they were working early, they were not. He told me it was after 8:00. And the pump issue, he told me there's no longer any pumps on site.
Okay.
And I have not directly heard... You know, this is the first I've heard of any of it. So it hasn't made it to my level and as far as I'm concerned, taken care of.
All right. Well, then, problem solved. Thank you, Bobby. Can you just make sure that Walt does continent of it? You know, as we have more and more infill development, as the city infills, I mean, obviously, having construction next door to you, nobody likes that. So we have to minimize the impact and just make sure the codes are being followed. I mean, that's all we can do, of course.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you, Bobby. Any other questions from council? No? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of adopting resolution 3216-16? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, next item on our agenda is item number 20. Hey, David, just relay to Meritage that, you know, please, we don't want to get any more of these emails. Thank you. Just catching up. Alrighty. Resolution number 3226-16, Site Development Order 464-16, is the Dwell at Oviedo Preliminary Subdivision Plan. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us on this, please?
Thank you, mayor. This is a request for city council to approve Site Development Order Number 464-16. This Site Development Order accomplishes multiple items. First, it is the preliminary subdivision plan for the Dwell subdivision. It is also the preliminary development plan for lots three and four of the subdivision. The total land area is approximately 25.26 acres. The subject property is located on the north side of Oviedo Mall Boulevard and west side of West Broadway Street, State Route 426. Lynda, if you could pull up the graphic on that one as well. And if possible, zoom in. The property's future land use designation is mixed use and its zoning district is planned unit development. The PUD is governed by a non-statutory development agreement that was approved by ordinance number 1591 on October 6, 2014. The Dwell, the preliminary subdivision plan and lots three and four were reviewed per the non-statutory development agreement as well as the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. The staff has concluded that the preliminary plan, as well as the preliminary subdivision plan, do comply with through its review. The applicant plans to subsidize the property into six parcels, creating two public right-of-way, a continuation of Oviedo Medical Drive to the north of Oviedo Mall Boulevard, as well as a widening of Sugar Mill Road perpendicular to West Broadway Street. Both rightaways will be 60 feet wide. The development will have full and main access on Oviedo Mall Boulevard and a secondary access on State Route 426. The applicant proposes on lots three and four to construct 296 multifamily dwelling units. If you remember from the master plan, the lots to the west, I believe it's parcels two and three, are going to be where office was planned. And then there's also a hotel lot planned down on the north side of Mall Boulevard. There are two deviations requested from the Land Development Code. Each deal with landscape islands within parking lots. The deviations are requested to accommodate the landscape islands with small trees adjacent to proposed garages and also provide sidewalks within some of the parking islands to improve the safety of pedestrians. per the non-statutory development agreement. The local planning agency considered resolution number thirty-two twenty-six dash sixteen at its Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen meeting, and there it recommended approval. The LPA also requested some language be added to the plans. That language has been added. It's recommended that city council adopt resolution number three-two-two-six dash sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Applicant is present. Do you have a presentation for us?
Chad Moorhead of Stokes, four-thirty-one, East Ratio Avenue. No presentation for you tonight. Mr. Cobb did a good job explaining the project. Great answering questions.
Great. Counsel, have any questions while Mr. Moorhead's here?
No.
Originally, the plan was a mix of three-story buildings and a four-story tower. Is that still the plan?
It is now four four-story buildings.
Oh, okay.
Boosted by one.
So it's four four-story buildings. How many three stories?
None.
None. Much better choice, having elevators in those buildings. I wish others would have made that decision. Good choice. I think you'll do well. That's something that's needed out here for elders, you know, to be able to go up and down inside hallways and things like that. I think you'll do good. All righty. Thank you. I have no public comment forms. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address us on the dwell? I know it's redundant that I ask since I know what each of you are here for, but we do have to do that. Seeing none, we will close the public comment meeting, and we will move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Does the mayor make a motion to adopt resolution three-two-two-six dash one-six?
Second. Motion by Deputy Mayor and seconded by Councilman Britton. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
I just asked, I know that the, I can ask the applicant. I know it's, you're not subject to the new rules, and it looks good, but I'm just, we're going to keep it looking that good and possibly strive for as much of those look that we're looking for in terms of the new rules that we can get when you come forward. Okay. I mean, that's something to be looking for when you come forward with the place that I, I like what I'm seeing so far in the images. They look good, but I just, I think you guys have seen what we've been looking for over the past year. I want to make sure that they continue to look that good.
Sure.
Please, that's what I'm asking you.
Four-story marble towers are nice.
I'm Clay Chandler. I'm with the client company. I'm the developer.
Right.
Yeah, the architecture is not done yet, so you're catching this at time. We have the ability to look at your architectural standards and try to apply them as best we can.
Wonderful.
The buildings are, if you've seen our project down in the Lakeview area...
Oh, yeah.
The footprints are natural four-story building down there, so the idea is that it would be a very similar project.
Great. Wonderful.
Are you surface parking everything or a garage?
Surface parking. Surface parking. We do have garages, but they're all in, all on the perimeter of the property.
Oh, garages, correct. Not apartment.
Not parking garages. Stack parking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Deputy Mayor? Counselman Britton?
This has been kicking around for a couple of years now, I think. Seems like a really good project. I like the fact that there's a hotel included. Could you tell us anything about that?
The, we are currently working with brokers. We're trying to market it. We're also marketing the two properties to, on the two lots on the west side for offices. We're getting some serious interest in the office. No real interest in the hotel yet, but we're optimistic. We think it's a good site, especially with the hospital moving across the street. We might be a little bit before our time on the hospital, on the hotel, but we think ultimately it'll be successful.
Yeah, I think it'll be a great anchor for the hospital and an amenity for the mall, so good luck.
Thank you.
Councilman Henken, anything?
Yeah, I mean, it's just a product that we don't have, you know, that you mentioned it, Mr. Mayor, you know, elevators, people getting elderly now and get in, get up to their apartment. They don't want to take care of the lawn anymore, so I think it's something we don't have that we need, so I'm looking forward to seeing it. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman, anything?
I think everyone said a lot, said everything already. Good luck. I know you'll build something beautiful, as Councilman, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, had said, about the architectural standards, so we're looking forward to it.
Thank you, Clay. Any other questions from counsel? Anything, Mr. Cobb, to add?
No, Mayor.
Motion on table is to adopt resolution thirty-two twenty-six dash sixteen. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're welcome. You in town long, Clay, or you heading back?
Here to help.
Back to Philly. All righty. Next up is resolution number three-two-two-eight dash sixteen, amended and restated non-statutory development agreement and associated preliminary subdivision plan for Central Park Townhomes. Mr. Cobb, please enlighten us.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for counsel to approve an amended and restated non-statutory development agreement and a preliminary subdivision plan for the Central Park Townhomes. Property is approximately seven acres. It's located on the west side of Central Avenue, approximately twenty-four hundred feet north of Mitchell Hammock Road. It is designated downtown mixed use on the comprehensive plan, future land use map. It has two zoning districts. It has mixed-use district Central Avenue on the east side of the property, and then it also has mixed-use district multifamily on the west side of the property. On January seventh, two thousand and eight, the council adopted resolution number seventeen fifty-seven dash zero eight, approving a mixed-use development for the property. It included two commercial buildings as well as fifty-eight townhome units. The city council has also granted various extensions to the non-statutory development agreement since its original approval. The amended and restated development, the purpose of it is basically to substitute or remove the commercial uses from the project and just have it as a standard townhome project. The, it would increase the number of townhomes from the originally approved fifty-eight to the proposed sixty-eight townhomes. The development agreement contains all of the, all of the various standards of development for the, for the property, and the buildings will basically consist of either four or six attached dwelling units, a maximum height of thirty-five feet. The max, it will have minimum lot area of one thousand nine hundred and eighty square feet, minimum floor area of the townhomes should be sixteen hundred square feet. The minimum lot width of the townhomes will be twenty-two feet. The developer was, is going to provide a, three parking spaces per unit, two spaces will be provided within the townhome unit garage. The, Lynn, if you could, could you pull up the other graphic? This is something that's special to this particular project. This is a graphic of the elevation of, I believe it's a six-unit building. The development agreement has special language that the townhomes will be constructed per this rendering. This rendering is Exhibit B of the development agreement. If the developer comes and decides to do a different, a different design, then the developer will be required to comply with the architectural standard, the townhome architectural standards at the time of development. That language is specifically stated within the development agreement. The staff has reviewed the amended and restated development agreement, as well as the preliminary subdivision plan, and recommends approval. The city attorney has also reviewed the documents and recommends approval. The local planning agency considered the resolution at its June twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen meeting and recommended approval, with the condition that language of note number twenty-nine on the title sheet of the preliminary subdivision plan be amended to match the language of the non-statutory development agreement of page six, section four. Note twenty-nine has been amended as recommended by the LPA. It's recommended that city council adopt resolution number three-two-two-eight, three-two-two-eight dash sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I see the applicant's present. Do you have anything to add?
Chad Moorhead, four-thirty-one, East Ratio Avenue. Agreed with staff recommendations. Here to answer any questions.
You have it easy tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I have no request to speak forms. Anybody in the audience like to address counsel on resolution thirty-two twenty-eight dash sixteen? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-two twenty-eight dash sixteen.
Motion second. Councilman Henken, you have the floor.
The only thing I want to say is, you know, the more and more, since we have these new standards coming in, everybody's complying and making it a little bit easier. You know, it has all three, you know, components we like to see, you know, the brick, the stone, the siding, you know, multiple things to dress it up nice, and, you know, we're just trying to make, make sure Oviedo doesn't become any town USA. And Chad, you've been here, you kind of know what we're looking for, so, I mean, that picture, you know, spoke a thousand words. A lot of times, you know, I would tell developers, just bring us the picture. Sometimes you can just look at that, and it just cuts right to the chase, so that looked fine. So especially in that area, you could use it, so it's good.
Great. And the second was Deputy Mayor.
I concur. I think, you know, it'll be a nice addition to the area. It'll, I think, even be better than what was originally thought of a few years back when we were looking at it. I think it'll add to the area. Thanks.
Councilwoman?
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Cobb, maybe you can answer them. You said that it was originally zoned to have two commercial buildings.
Yes, ma'am.
Why are they pulling those out?
I think that would probably be a question for the applicant.
Okay.
All right. Yes, ma'am, I may just correct. The original design did have two commercial buildings that fronted on State Route four-thirty-four.
Oh, my. The mayor, four-hundred Kent Quarter, Oviedo, Florida, the applicant for Central Park Townhomes. The market just didn't demand the office space. We tried marketing that for the last eight years. Granted, it was a downturn in the economy, but even when the economy came back, we tried working with these companies to get them up there. They're still building, and they wound up building somewhere else to exist in the building. So it's just market conditions. Trying to sell the product. The townhome builders just wanted all townhomes. They don't want to do next commercial. So that's the reason.
Even with all the building that's going on in Oviedo on the park, they weren't interested then?
I'm no expert by any means in demand, but from a landowner, residential demand's there, but the commercial space just isn't.
Okay. My second question is, the drawing that you have up there, it looks as if it has, in there you said that they are not required to follow our architectural standards that, as we have them right here today.
Correct.
And can, just help me to understand that, because I thought that it had expired, and then they resubmitted, so wouldn't the architectural standards come today with today's standards that we have?
I don't think it ever expired. They submitted their application before it actually expired, and so with its history, it was considered prior to the zoning in progress, but I do know that the staff worked with their representatives to using the standards as the model, and they got this graphic as close as they could get to the, to the standards of the zoning in progress. And so that was one of the things, was that they worked very hard, very diligently, both sides worked very diligently, on developing this, this design, and so that's why there's the secondary language in there that if they do not use this design, then they will comply with, with this townhome regulations.
Because I was looking at the design, and it looks as if, and I, I don't know all the percentages or anything like that, but it almost looks like it fits in to our standards now.
It is, it is very, very close. I've got to commend both staff and the applicant, because they worked very hard together to put together a product that is very, there might be a few things, like, I know Dr. Correa, when we were talking about it, she said, there may be a few percentages where we're off just a little bit, but they really worked, worked together to bring about a design that, that reflect, that is reflective of the standards.
I think it's very nice, and I think it's going to be a welcome addition to that area, Central Avenue up there, and make it beautiful, because I walk by it every day, every day, so let's make it beautiful. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Well, I know we're talking... Oh, I'm sorry, Keith. You're so quiet down there. Sorry.
Yeah, just a few other comments. I recall when this thing came through, when was it, two thousand and eight originally?
Yes, sir.
And it was a, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth to make this fit in with the surrounding residential areas, so...
First question, is are these going to be owner-occupied, or are they going to be rental units?
Yes, they'll be fee simple ownership owner-occupied.
Okay. That's, that's good. That's not going to change?
No.
And those of you sitting up here know why I'm asking that question, because that's happened in the past, and it's been a painful process. Other than the swap-out for the commercial, for the additional units, is the original agreement intact from what we agreed on in two thousand and eight?
Speaking to that meeting in two thousand and eight, the, I should say, the restrictions that were put in the DA regarding the neighborhoods, the neighbors that spoke, such as no lights on the second story, some of the setback concerns, the buffering, all that stays the same.
Okay. I'm more concerned with the buffering. I think I saw something on the types of fences that are going to go in.
Yeah. It's, it's actually more brick wall slash precast wall now than was the first go around.
Okay. I just want to make sure that what we agreed on back then isn't being morphed into something else, so...
No, if anything, it's more stringent now with the architectural standards that are in there, to answer Councilwoman Drago's question. It didn't expire, and technically now I could build fifty-eight townhomes with no architectural standards, so rather than get in a tractive battle with the city. Staff, we resurrected these standards that I spoke about in December here, went through those as best we could, and came up with this rendering, and that's where we're at today. So rather than fight it out, this is where we're at. As Brian spoke, to the exact percentages, we can't say, because these aren't scale drawings, and truthfully, your standards haven't been adopted either, and they're still working on ours as well. So as the standards sit today, this matches them as best we can.
Okay. Good. Anything else? No? No. All I was going to say is that this one has been going on for a long time, and we appreciate you acquiescing and following the new code. It probably made your life a lot easier, but that being said, is there anything else for the good of the order from the council, staff?
Yes, sir.
Applicant? No? Call the question. All in favor of the motion on the table to adopt resolution three-two-two-eight dash one-six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we're up to resolution number three-two-two-nine dash one-six, amended site development order number four-fifty-seven dash sixteen for Mike Roberto Way and City Walk Lane Road Improvements at Oviedo on the Park. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Lynn, if you could pull up the graphic for this one as well. Mayor, this is a request for this council to approve an amendment to site development order number four-fifty-seven dash sixteen, which governs the construction of Mike Roberto Way, the east extension of Mike Roberto Way, as well as the construction of City Walk Lane, which are two, which are two dedicated public rightaways. City council adopted resolution number thirty-one fifty dash sixteen, approving the Strand replat, which dedicated the rights of way to the sitting. The approved road improvements allow for the development of the continuation of Mike Roberto Way, as well as for the connection of the City Plaza Way, not City, City Walk Lane, from Mitchell Hammock to City Walk to Center Lake Lane. The amendment addresses a deviation request related to sidewalks along Mike Roberto Way and to front setbacks related to the sidewalks, and the removal of two proposed parking lot islands. Along this, along Mike Roberto Way, there is an area where there were nine parking spaces and two islands, and what the proposal is, is to remove the two islands and create them as parking spaces, so that we would have eleven parking spaces within that area. The staff has reviewed the requests, and, oh, there is one other request. The other request is on the very far east side of Mike Roberto Way, that currently it has to be constructed prior to the issuance of the first CO for the strand, and the applicant is asking that that very far east section of Mike Roberto Way, that that be allowed to wait, the finishing of it, be allowed to wait until the issuance of the certificate of occupancy to building number, I believe it's three B, which is a building that is directly north, it's on the north side of Mike Roberto Way, and it also fronts on the west side of Oviedo Boulevard. Now, the, as far as City Walk and the... that be allowed to wait, the finishing of it be allowed to wait until the issuance of the certificate of occupancy to building number, I believe it's 3B, which is a building that is directly north, it's on the north side of Mike Roberto Way, and it also fronts on the west side of Oviedo Boulevard. Now, the, as far as City Walk and the part of Mike Roberto West of that, that would still be tied to the first CO for the Strand, however, this one section, the applicant is requesting that we tie it to the building that is immediately adjacent to that part of the right of way. And the reason they're asking is that that is their primary construction entrance, and so while they, while construction is going on, that, that roadway would not, it would not be good to go ahead and put the finishing touches into that roadway until the construction has been completed, and so the applicant is requesting that we modify the conditions of approval of the site development order to make, to accommodate that request. The applicant has reviewed the request and recommends adoption of Resolution number 3229-16.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Does the applicant have anything to add? No? I have no request to speak forums, excuse me, on this item. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address this on 3229-16? Seeing and hearing none, I will close public comments and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Henken?
Would you like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 3229-16?
Second.
Motion second, Councilman Henken, you have the floor.
Nope, I have no questions, it's all good.
Councilwoman?
No, I think it looks great.
Councilman Britton?
Well, I'm reading the, the letter here from Mr. Kavanaugh to Mr. Yergane on, on the rationale for it. It's a little bit hard to understand the rationale, but I suspect it's to, if I can summarize this, it's to allow construction traffic on, on Mike Roberto Way and keep the vehicular traffic off of it until such time as that the construction traffic has gone away? Is that pretty much it? Okay. It makes sense to do it that way, I was a little bit concerned that we, we did talk about this a while back, that we wanted all of that infrastructure in before we started issuing the COs, but this seems to have a fairly good rationale for it, so let's go do it.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
We're just talking that last leg coming in.
Yes, sir.
That's going to be, right, everything else will be?
Everything else.
Yeah, they'll be, you know, because that way, there'll be exit points for people utilizing the stores, Starbucks, et cetera, as it comes up, and as things start coming up, they'll have the ways to get out to Oviedo Boulevard by heading back down, so I, I don't see a problem.
Okay. Anything else? Just, just complete Mike Roberto Way, please, please. Alrighty, hearing nothing else, Mr. Cobb, anything?
No, Mayor.
No, council, anything? Applicant? No, good. Call the question, all in favor of the motion on the table to adopt ordinance number 3229-16, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, moving on, discussion items, we have none this evening. Mr. Cobb, we're up to your report.
Mayor, I just want to thank the council for your participation in the development of this year's budget, also, you can see that list of people there hanging on the wall, I want to say a special thank you to them and a special recognition from me, they worked extremely hard this year, and it, we had a special exercise this year on my whiteboard as we normally do each year. We narrowed it down that all of this, we were able to do with 9% of the budget, and that's what we really, when we sat down and really started looking at all the different things that we had control over, we found out we have control over 9%, and we were able to do a lot with that 9%. So I want, I want to acknowledge them and tell them my, my sincere thanks, and also thank you for your help in putting it together. It gets, even like I said, it was bigger, it was a bigger challenge this year, but it gets better, every year it seems to get better, so, thank you.
Our pleasure, Brian. Anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Groot, you're up.
I'm going to pass this evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have nothing to report.
Alrighty. Councilmember Henken, you're up, Steve.
Just a quick thing, Brian, I'm glad now that you finally have your assistant city manager position funded, and you don't have to row the boat by yourself anymore, so, you know, so hopefully that'll, that'll work out good for you, and you'll make that appointment soon, so, just wanted to pick that out, we've been trying to fund that for a while, so it is quite, quite amazing, so, good job, Brian, that's all I had.
Councilwoman, you're up.
Actually, I have no report tonight.
Alrighty. Councilman Britton?
Can't believe you guys didn't pick up, just a couple of questions, a couple of comments, one is, someone, the mayor, was pleased to announce that Center Lake Park received the 2016 Award of Merit from the Florida American Society of Landscape Architects, so, congratulations, Drew, that goes to you, good job, and then I also see something in here that we were the safest city in Florida.
Yep.
So Chief Chudnow, congratulations, good job, and, and I read your, what is that, a monthly report or a quarterly report you send out? Monthly report, our crime rate is scary low, and, just keep it that way, yeah. It just, it's phenomenal how, how well a job you guys are doing, so, keep it up, and we'll go from there, and the only other thing I have is I will not be here on August 1st, I'm going to be at a conference in Washington, so, just announcing that I'll be absent that night.
Okay, the three of you cannot have.
It's just the three of us. Just the three of us.
Nobody can be sick that night, that's scary, that is scary, we're leaving just the three of you, three of them.
That's going to be, that's going to be good. Hey, can I just, before you turn it off?
No, I'm really seriously considering changing my vacation plans, knowing that.
Flying back from the Baltics.
Can I just add one thing on to Keith? Chief? Whoop, am I working? There we go. Chief Chudnow? I was going to say, you know, Britton just talked about how low the crime rate is, and I just wanted to, in case anybody didn't catch it, we are going to put in the hands of the voters, and what I always say, when we give it to the masses, they get it right, to finally get you guys a new home, which you desperately need, so, I know that once our residents see the plans and we give them the education like they did with the fire station, you guys will have that, and then, you know, you won't have to live in those conditions anymore, but it is a testament, being there and being in those facilities, the job you're doing, so, but the relief is coming. Yes?
What, what, what's wrong with the building they're in? So it's 26 years old, and there's 12 detectives in one 10 by 10 room. It works. Anyway, Councilman Britton?
It was your report, and we hijacked it.
You good? Alrighty. Myself, real quick, Drew, you got a, you did an incredible job at 4th of July, I don't, I don't think we've met since you, since the event. The fireworks vendor this year, whoever it was, I mean, nothing but compliments from all the residents on the quality of the show, that, that band, what was their, their names, Rocket or something? Ah, those guys were also very good, so, great job by you, your staff, everybody was out there in that heat all afternoon to put on just another incredible 4th of July event. Also, Drew, now I'll stay on you, you've got your I-4 comedy tour coming up Friday night. Anybody who hasn't been to it, the first one, when we were there, it was great, so, it's a fun event, 7 o'clock, doors open over here at the amphitheater, it is indoors, it's not outdoors, so you'll be in the air conditioning, and the comedians were a lot of fun last time, everybody enjoyed themselves. The Oviedo Winter Springs Chamber of Commerce had their hobnob about a month ago, again, we haven't met in a while, it was well attended as usual, they put on a great event, and, you know, Chief, we're just, we're going to harp on your crime rate numbers for, for a second, you know, when you, when you look at the crime rate, and you look at the crime rate per capita of Oviedo today compared to 30 years ago, it's actually lower today, and, and the, the phenomenon with social media, you know, people seem to think that we have this unbelievable crime rate, and as we have growth, we have more crime, nothing could be further from the truth. The crime rate for capita keeps going down each year, which means your crime rate is actually going down. Yes, there are, there, there's more crimes if you look at the number, but when you look at the overall number and how it's measured, it's lower, so, that is just a great job by all the men and women over at the department, and, you know, as I said, with social media, as soon as something happens anywhere, it's all over the place, and people just assume, you know, crime is out of control, and nothing could be further from the truth, so, great job. That's the end of my report, Deputy Mayor Schenk.
If I could ask, council, Brian and I were talking the other day, and we were mentioning, Drew was in there, about committees, and we were talking about the Parks and Rec Committee and ION, I just like to, if we can grab a discussion up, to kind of redirect possibly, give those guys.
That's a great discussion to have on August 1st.
We'd do like to do that when we're all back in town.
Yes.
We'd rather have it all, I know, you know, Keith's involved in both of those, so I definitely like to see him involved and in town in both of those, but it just, again, giving them a little direction, seeing the effectiveness, not of ION, ION has been very effective, but like, kind of, I know Ben had been, you know, what's the next step, where, where do they go, and, and let's help, help them understand, or just us understand, where to next, the largest of that program, and again, Parks and Rec, just maybe re-delving into them, but just having a discussion about that, you know, in the future.
We can do that, and I've been trying to figure out how to maybe reconfigure the Parks and Recs committee, get some more of the representation, some of those guys have been on there, but some of them are still active in the programs. ION's doing well, and as you know, both of those committees, because we formed them, we were able to qualify for a lot of grant money that.
Yeah, it's not a matter of getting, getting rid of it, you know, like any, you know, girl, they've, they've done some great things now, it's a matter of just reshaping them, directing them, and seeing what they feel is a good thing, and kind of, you know, hearing from you, hey, where, and Drew, and how can we reshape it a little bit possibly to get to be as effective as it was in the beginning?
Good time to do that.
You know, that kind of thing, that's all, that's it.
Mr. Cobb, maybe September would be a good time for that, that way we'll have everybody present. Alrighty, anything else for the good of the order from council? Staff? Mr. Cobb, anything? Alrighty, future meeting dates, we have Monday, August 1st, 2016, 6:30 PM, then we have Monday, August 15th, 2016, 6:30 PM, both are regular sessions here in the council chambers. Monday, August 29th, 5:30 PM is a budget work session. With that being said, our meeting is adjourned, it is 10 of 8.